Councilmember, Agency Director, Authority Members, Krist.
Present.
Mann.
Present.
Marcus.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chairman Smith.
Here.
Mayor-Chairman Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. The invocation tonight is with Pastor Michael Arnwein. Prevailing word, Christian center. You have no pastor. Okay, let's go on to the pledge of allegiance. Okay, you want to do it from there? Okay. We're going to have little Miss Lancaster.
Lily in Brooklyn.
Lily Zuniga. Lily, right. You're going to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, right? And the flag's right behind you, so we've got to face the flag. But if you stand behind that microphone and pull it down, everybody will be able to hear you. Just pull it up. I don't think we've had it that level before.
Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. If you stay right there, I'm coming down. No, you too.
Brooklyn.
Brooklyn.
She's Brooklyn.
Huh?
She's Brooklyn, not Kathy.
Kathy's not here? You're a courtship.
I'm actually Hughes with, like, for 2009. Junior, Miss, and I don't have a certificate.
But if I'd known you were here, you'd have. Okay. This is Lily Zuniga. Lily has been actively involved in community service work for Lancaster Business and Citizens. She has contributed numerous community service hours, serving multiple organizations and events such as Dog Tags for Kids, Grace Resources, St. Vincent's, AV Migrant Education Organization, the Poppy Festival, Martin Luther King Junior Service Day, Lancaster Grand Prix. I didn't see you at Lancaster Grand Prix.
I was rooting for you. I was rooting for you.
I should give you two awards. And the Boulevard Grand Prix. She's actually at all the events with me, and she, you know, she enthraws the press and gets them to take my picture. Thank you, Lily. Here you go. It's not on? How about now? Isn't technology wonderful? Okay, let's get a picture. Okay? Okay, all speaker cards must be filled out and submitted prior to the agenda item being called. The same rule applies if you wish to speak on non-agendized items at the end of the meeting. Following this process will allow us to conduct a timely and orderly meeting. Thank you. City Manager, any items to be removed from the Agency Consent Calendar?
No, sir, but we do have the fire department here that would like to present this to the council, if you might.
Oh, terrific. What'd we do? I guess they'll tell us, huh?
As you may or may not know, my name is Luke Claus. I'm the Assistant Fire Chief for the Division Five, which is the area that serves the Ann O Valley. I had the distinct opportunity to give this award to Mark Wazigan, the City Manager, at our Fire Service Day, and he suggested that we also present it to you. So, in doing that, we had a Fire Service Day on May the 15th, last Saturday, and it was a big success. We had a lot of people come. We had to see our equipment, to see what we do, and in that, we also thought that it's important that we show our gratitude to the cities that support us so well, because we're unable to do our job without the support that you guys give.
Now, I was on sound. You mean these guys didn't go?
We had a great turnout. Nevertheless, we, but truly, we're very grateful. We have a lot of busy stations in the Ann O Valley. They go out a lot. They do a good job for the citizens. We're very proud of the job that we do, and not only that, we're very proud of the support that we get. And if I can just read this, it says, "Presented to the City of Lancaster in gratitude and grateful appreciation for your continued support to the County of Los Angeles firefighter and the Division Five firefighters that serve the Ann O Valley."
Thank you very much.
And it's dated May 15, 2010.
Thank you. Should I come down? I'll come down to you. Thank you very much, Chief. Appreciate it. That's great. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, RC four, you want to draw to that? Is that right, Ken?
Yes, excuse me. RCC four, the property that's on beach. I also own property that just would be due north of there, so I need to recuse myself.
Okay, let's do RCC one through RCC three.
I'll move that we adopt the Agency Consent Calendar as currently comprised.
I'll second that.
Let's vote.
It shut off too fast. I hit mine. It was a yes.
All right, let's vote again. Okay, Mr. Mann has left the room. Is there a motion on RCC four?
I move that we adopt RCC four. Is there a second?
Second, Dan.
Let's vote. It's unanimous with Mr. Mann recusing himself. Mr. Mann, you want to come on back? Or I guess he's theoretically not supposed to be able to hear me, huh? Mr. Mann has returned. Anything on the consent calendar for the council we need to remove?
We have a speaker's card on CC ten, so we'll remove CC ten.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion on everything but CCC one through CC 27 with the exclusion of CC two?
I move that we adopt the consent calendar as currently comprised.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to CC ten, Gary Spinetti.
Evening. Hi, Mr. Mayor.
How are you?
I'm Gary Spinetti with Granite Construction Company, the local manager. The reason I wanted to address the council this evening is you're about to award a project, a public works project, to a contractor that was the low bidder. However, we maintain that there were some inadequacies with his small bids, or his disadvantaged business enterprise efforts to include DBEs in the award and in participation in the project. I outlined these issues in a letter to the city, which I got a response yesterday, basically shrugging off the things that we outlined, them saying that they were minor irregularities. I could go into details, but they're outlined in the letter. A couple of the things, they didn't do what we would consider an adequate job, and having dealt with Caltrans for years and done a lot of projects under their UDBE requirements, some of the things that the low bidder did in this particular instance, we have seen be cause for non-award by Caltrans. And so I would just suggest that the council and the city, before they award this, make sure that these actions by the low bidder will stand the test for Caltrans and the UDBE requirements, and not put the city's reimbursement for this work in jeopardy with Caltrans or federal highways.
I'm totally confused.
Okay.
You haven't told me anything I understand.
Specifications require that a certain percentage of the work be subcontracted to disadvantaged businesses. And they give a goal to meet, and if you can't meet that goal, then they expect you to do a good faith effort to make sure that the disadvantaged businesses have the opportunity to participate in the project.
What's a disadvantaged business?
It's a business that is owned or controlled by minorities or historically disadvantaged people.
Okay.
There's ways to get qualified through Caltrans and through some other agencies. Most, I think the city uses Caltrans qualifications and the listing.
Okay.
You have to be listed, and there's an application process. And so during the pre-bid process, what's required typically is to go out and solicit these firms to bid on certain aspects, you know, which are in their specialty that are part of the project. And the project usually has a goal, a specified goal, a percentage of the project that they want the general contractor to subcontract that amount to minority contractors. And if they can't meet that goal, then you have to go through the good faith efforts to make sure that, you know, that they've had all the opportunities. Some of the things that happened in this, just list a couple of the examples that have been cause for Caltrans to take low bids and not award them because of some of the things that happened in this. There was some striping work, road striping that had to be done. The particular contract's about $1,001, $1.1 million. The striping work was worth about $6,000, I believe. There was a DBE quote from a qualified DBE subcontractor that was $250 higher than a non-DBE quote that came in. We, in fact, listed the disadvantaged business to be, to do the work. The low bidder did not. They listed the non-DBE subcontractor that was a few dollars, as you can see, $250. The test, according to Caltrans, is reasonableness, and $250, which on this particular piece of work was about 4%, is definitely not reasonable to exclude the DBE because of that small amount. So, in fact, we did list the DBE contractor, and the low bidder did not. We've had lots of cases where Caltrans has thrown out some of our bids, in fact, where we didn't, you know, do it, where we did use the non-DBE subcontractor.
Did they meet the requirement for the number of disadvantaged businesses?
Pardon me?
Did they meet the requirement for the number of disadvantaged businesses?
No, none of the bidders did.
Did you?
We did not. We were, they listed zero percentage, and we had, I think it was about $40,000 worth, which was about three, between 3% and 4% of the contract.
And is that the difference between the bids?
No, no, the difference was about $30,000, $35,000. It was close.
So, if you'd used the non-disadvantaged businesses, you would have been the low bid?
No, no. We still would have, we still would have not been below their bid.
Then, then I don't understand the...
Because the rules, the specifications require certain things be done to meet the goals, and if you can't, then to establish that you went through, you acted in good faith and made a good faith effort to include them, which we did, in fact, and by...
One second. Vance Construction, have we done business with them in the past?
That I don't know, Robert.
You have?
I believe we have.
You have?
Yeah, Dave, if we...
Hold on, I haven't got an answer yet. In comparison to Granite and Vance, what is the ratio of business we've done?
I don't know. This is the first time that the issue is brought to my attention.
Okay.
Is there any minor inadequacies in the RFP process that would trigger anything from Caltrans to not come through with?
No, actually, this was reviewed with Caltrans by staff, and they concluded that the requirements of the good faith effort and the UDB were satisfied in this case. And they pointed out that even though the discrepancy here, the difference between the DBE bid and the non-DBE bid was $255, I believe, they indicated that that was only unreasonable in hindsight. It would appear to be unreasonable in hindsight, but going forward, it's their view that that amount could have made the difference in a bid, and therefore would have been, it would have been unreasonable to include the DBE in that bid for that very reason. And so they're satisfied that the requirements for the UDBEs and the good faith effort have been satisfied.
Does the council have discretion?
You're required to award the bid to the lowest responsible bidder, and in this case, Vance is the lowest responsible bidder. And to the extent there were any minor irregularities in the bid thing, you certainly have the ability to waive that irregularity. But we don't think there were any irregularities that needed to be waived.
So, Caltrans actually made a decision on this?
Yeah, it was at a staff level. It wasn't a formal decision by Caltrans, but the staff persons, the staff people that are actually working on the deal said that they're satisfied with it.
I see.
The names that were given to us in the letter, we deal with Caltrans, as I'm sure you're aware of, daily, and they were, I had never heard of either one of them. They're not the people that we deal with on these issues. So, I just caution the city to make sure that, before they award it, or if they do in fact award it, like I say, that was just one issue. There was other issues with their good faith effort. Part of it is the amount of effort they made to solicit. You know, we solicited 200, with, you know, 200 companies to bid on it. Theirs actually turned out to be 27, and it was by mistake because they solicited the wrong group. They solicited disadvantaged veterans as a group, which actually 27 of them turned out to be disadvantaged business enterprises that qualified under this also.
Thank you. Mr. Neal, is there any rush on this? Can we take a couple of weeks to look at this?
Yes, we could take a couple of weeks to look at this.
And it wouldn't cause any detriment to anyone?
Not that I'm aware of.
Anybody have a problem with that?
No.
Okay. Do we need a motion, or can we just put it over?
Probably ought to have a motion to continue it to the next meeting.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to continue item number CC 10, Public Works Project Number 09026.
To the next meeting?
To the next meeting.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. We'll look into it.
If I could just say in closing, I just, you know, hope the city...
Why don't we do this? Why don't we schedule a meeting, and we'll look into it?
Okay.
All right? I just want to be satisfied.
Sure. Like I say, I just want to make sure the city, you know, make sure that their reimbursement, they don't jeopardize their reimbursement. You know, if it goes to the other bidder, then so be it. And like I say, I just want to make sure that, you know, reimbursement isn't jeopardized.
It's not the first page of law.
And you don't have to get ahold of me, as does your staff.
I would like you to call Anita at the city and set up a meeting.
Okay, we'll do. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to switch the council agenda with the public hearing, at least CCA, item number one. So, we can let people get out. Well, it's the only thing on the council agenda, isn't it? Okay, you put okay? Anybody got a problem? All right, then let's do that. And that is the approval of the appointments to the city commissions. Do you have any speaker cards on this? The planning commission, unless one of you all have an objection, let's do it all en masse, okay? The planning commission will be Jim Voss, Raj Malley, Daniel Jacobs, Cassandra Harvey, Randy Hall, Fabian Toriciano, and Alex Wheeler. Mr. Wilson of the Ann O Valley Press is correct, I do not have the authority to appoint the commissioner, the chairman of that particular commission. However, I would strongly recommend that they elect Jim Voss as the chairman of that. The architectural design and planning commission, April Bartlett will be the chair, Matthew Buchanan will be the vice chair, Timothy Wiley, Andrew Mercy, Diana Cook, and Courtney Stallworth will be the first six members. The seventh member will be appointed next meeting. The criminal justice commission will be, the chair will be David Vera, Sandy Smith will be the vice chair, Mark Brown, Jim Koppel, and Conception Harris and Tim Fuller are the members of that commission. The Lancaster Neighborhood Vitalization Commission, Tim Stertavant will be the chair, Stephen Derryberry will be the vice chair. The members will be Brett Banks, Riza Schepler, Larry Grooms, Lou Stoltz, and David Sinclair. Is there a motion to approve?
Move we approve?
You had me worried there, guys. Okay.
Second.
Let's vote. Those members that are present, if you want to come on down, and the city clerk will swear you in.
It might be easier if we come around. I state your name. Do solemnly swear or affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Excellent, congratulations. I need your signatures, please.
And I guess we'll find the other people that didn't show up. If you guys would make your appointments, we have city badges for you, we'll be issuing. Okay, good. Let's take a five-minute break, and we'll be back.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. As provided for under their franchise agreement with the city, Waste Management is requesting an annual adjustment of service rates for the collection and disposal of solid waste and recyclable materials. If approved, collection rates for residential, commercial services will increase by 5.4% and roll-off services will increase by 4.9%. This means that a typical single-family household with a standard three-card service will increase by $1.23 per month for a standard monthly service charge of $23.99. For standard bin services that you find for apartments, multifamily residences, it would also increase by 5.4% or $2.96 a month for a monthly service charge of $57.69. Under our agreement, which was renegotiated in April of 2007, requests for rate adjustments must be received 60 days prior to adjustment. We received Waste Management's request May 1st. The agreement allows for the adjustment of service rates based on five indices. Labor is adjusted according to an agreement between Teamsters, Local 9, 86, and Waste Management. Fuel is adjusted based on Producer's Price Index for number-two diesel equipment, also adjusted by the Producer's Price Index. Disposal cost, the actual average rate, gate rates for a number of landfills in the area, and also the consumer prices indexed. We have gone through independently and thoroughly checked to see if these indices changed and that they were appropriately applied. I'd like to point out to you that last year, the 2009 rate increase was actually a negative 1.9%. The proposed 2010 rate increase of 5.4% means that accumulatively, it will be a 3.5% increase over a two-year period, or less than 2% per year. With that, I would respectfully request that you adopt Resolution Number 10-32, and I stand ready to answer questions that you may have.
Any questions?
I just had a couple of questions. I know at one point I had asked about the free dumping days Waste Management gives to citizens in Lancaster or customers. Do you know what that is now?
If you had a swing set, or you did a complete house remodel and wanted to put furniture out at the curb, they'll collect that for free.
Well, I just think about the amount of dumping that goes on in the Antelope Valley and Lancaster, and if there's any way that Waste Management would come up with, you know, just at least a day every six months or something like that, where people can just go in, you know, it wouldn't be customers. I just don't know if that's feasible, but that's one of the things I'm always, you know, concerned about, is how do we stop some of the illegal dumping?
The deputy city manager has tasked or organized a task force that we're currently addressing that issue right now, and Waste Management is an active partner in that task force. So it is definitely a hot-ticket item that we're looking at as well.
The other question was, and probably it's for Ms. Persley, but I forgot your married name, I'm sorry.
Ms. Persley.
Ms. Persley. Well, I know you and I talked this interview-
Does your mother know?
She's autistic.
Yeah. But I know we talked a while back about when the property, the homeowner puts their trash cans out front. Whose property is it? Because I know that quite often we see people going through the trash, and of course, the first concern I have is identity theft. Did, and I know we talked about that before, and I know we haven't gotten back with the, you know, a conclusion to that.
Sure. Well, first, good evening. I'm Sandra Persley, representative of Waste Management. Councilman McChryst, welcome and congratulations. I am proud to be serving the city of Lancaster, even though you make me incredibly nervous right now. For the anti-s scavenging, we have talked about that at length, and we are reintroducing our Waste Watch program, which is a spinoff of Neighborhood Watch. At late June, corporate security, they're all ex-FBI, are coming out to retrain our drivers. We hope to partner with the sheriff's department to reintroduce the program. The drivers are really the eyes and the ears, and we want to train them on reporting scavenging, getting the license plate number, and reporting that to dispatch so we can keep a list of it. We have also done some research on anti-s scavenging ordinances in similar cities, and that's something that I would be happy to meet with staff with and try to implement in your city as well.
I'd love to see that happen.
Yeah. I do acknowledge that it has been a problem. We've talked about that at length.
We'd be happy to meet with Waste Management on that, and if there's an ordinance we can introduce, we'd be happy to present it to you.
Okay, I'd like that. Thank you.
Last year, did you, there was a 1.9% decrease? Did you request a decrease in rates?
Yes, we submitted that it would be-
For last year?
Yes.
Can you tell me about your community involvement?
Absolutely. I'm glad you brought that up. We are really involved in a number of things. Off the top of my head, we contributed just under $850,000 in 2009 alone through free services and kind services and monetary donations to groups like the Boys and Girls Club, the Antelope Valley Fair, the City of Lancaster Build a Bike that I won in 2009, it needs to be said. And it was a big player in the 2010 contest. Jokes aside, we're really involved in the community. I'm really active with the Antelope Valley Legal Dumping Task Force with the Chamber of Commerce, but if you're looking for a dollar value, it's equivalent to $850,000.
Not a value, I'm looking for actually monetary values that you've given to the different. Your predecessor gave a lot to the community. I don't see you out there as much as your predecessor.
Well, he was out there a lot. He was a great community partner, and, you know, we're proud of our partnership in the city of Lancaster, and I would love to meet with you at a later date to go through what we have done and talk about how we can partner together to make that more strategic. So, you know, we have contributed a large amount, but we're certainly open to looking at that more with you.
Would you be open to postponing this till we talked?
We could talk with staff afterwards.
I'm uncomfortable voting on-
You mean until our meeting?
Excuse me? A separate meeting, so we can talk in regards to everything? I'm uncomfortable voting on this right now.
If we kick this over two weeks, is that a problem?
No.
Okay. Why don't we go ahead and do that? We should hire her. I mean, she's really very good.
Even nervous. I can crack a few jokes.
Mayor Paris, I mean, obviously, we can't have a Brown Act violation, but I would be more than happy to join Councilman Member Christie and meet with Sandra and discuss community involvement. I know that obviously all five of us were not involved in, oh, excuse me, four of us were not involved with the original contract that was established or reestablished in 2007, but I'd be more than happy to sit down and talk to Sandra.
I actually, I actually think it's perfectly appropriate for Sandy to meet with all of us individually, isn't that correct?
You can meet individually. We did set up a meeting with two of you to start with, so you can meet two at a time.
Just so I want everybody to be clear on that. There is absolutely nothing wrong with each and every one of us meeting with anybody that has business before the city. We just can't do it together.
Nor can you talk to each other about what you said in-
Right, unless we invite Mr. Wilson and everybody else. Yes, the vice mayor would like a short recess. Sorry, folks, just stay in your seat. We'll be back in a minute, two minutes. Okay. Back on. Okay, there's a motion to continue, is that right? Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Do you have any concerns?
Oh, not that I'm interested.
Okay, let's vote. Mr. Smith has abstained, otherwise it's unanimous. Mr. Talbot, you have a speaker's card. We're going to continue it for two weeks. Do you want to come back then, or?
I might not be alive in two weeks, you know.
We do have that issue. Come on down.
Thank you.
My gosh.
I don't like green bananas either. I think that Lyle Talbot, Lancaster, good evening, gentlemen and audience. I think back in 1992, when a few old gray taggers got together, when Waste Management wanted to go from a five-year contract to a 15-year contract, which concluded in '07, I understand, so. And we asked for some concessions, and we received some. And one we asked for was a senior discount, because we don't produce much trash, and especially, I live alone, and I only put my trash out about every three weeks. So we got a $2 discount. We also asked for a composting discount, that was $2, and granted. Yeah, it saved the green barrel. You didn't get a green barrel if you picked up a composting bin from the city, which I did. And then we asked for a discount if we pay an advance, a whole year in advance, and we got a 5% discount for that, and I still do that, my business that way with the company. But, you know, they need a raise for their problems, and some of us seniors, we could stand a little raise in our discount. So I'm proposing that when you get to talking with them next week, let's see if we can't raise that senior discount to $4. It'd be a great relief, and if we have a composting bin, we're supposed to be a green city, let's encourage more composting, and let's go from $2 to $4, or at least request it. And for the 10-year, or 1 year in advance, let's go from 5% and see if we can't get 10% concession from them. And a lot of folks that I talk to do not know about the senior discount that's available and the composting discount and the pay. So they may publish it somewhere in their annual mail-out, but I think the city should keep reminding us seniors that they can get that discount. And looking back, when you ran, this council ran, not this particular one, ran Wild Bill out of town here, so to speak. He couldn't pick up trash here because we had-
Wild Bill's my buddy. I didn't run him out of town.
I said-
That those other guys did.
You're interrupting my time, sir. So the reason the city wanted them to keep him out of town was we didn't want two trucks going over our infrastructure when it wasn't necessary. But now, we have three trucks. You got your normal trash, you got your green waste, and you got your recyclables. And at that time, Waste Management said, instead of having three trucks, they would try to get a three-compartment truck, and they haven't done that yet, so be a good idea. Blue Fire's not going to park out there with their ethanol refinery. They headed out to Mississippi.
Thank you, Lyle. That was very good. He raised some good points, Ms. Persley.
I did, I took notes.
Okay, good. Thank you. Okay, we'll resolve this in two weeks, all right? Great, thank you. Wow, you might have beat me if you'd used that in the election.
I accomplished my goal.
Thank you. Okay, city manager, any announcements? No, sir. City clerk?
Any person who would like to address the Redevelopment Agency and City Council on non-agendized matters may complete a speaker card. You will find speaker cards on the back table of the council chambers. We respectfully request that you fill out the cards completely and print as clearly as possible, so that if necessary, the city council, city manager, or city staff will be able to contact you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when you start to speak. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see that there are three lights. The green light comes on when you begin, the yellow light will come on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light will come on when your three minutes are up. We ask you that you, we ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well.
Thank you. Jason Zink.
On the, hello, council.
How are you?
Congratulations to your new post. Basically, on the, I missed the consent calendar, but it was a Lancaster bikeway that you guys approved, and you know how I am for temporary asphalt sidewalks for students at Endeavor, Miller Elementary, Paraclete, and Hall Park. And I believe that we need to put those in. We need to put, okay, no problem. We need to put those in. If you see how they, they did it on Lancaster Boulevard with that, I mean, they put that light on Avenue L8 and 30th Street West, which I think was a misappropriation of funds. I think sidewalks are more needed to the elementary schools and high schools and the park than the light that hardly anybody uses on L8. And the thing was, all the tractors, everything was there, they ripped up half the roads on both sides. You guys could have easily put the asphalt sidewalks in to go up to Paraclete High School and Hall Park. And mayor, like I say, you live right next to Miller Elementary, and it's a shame that there's no sidewalks there, and you live right next door to it. So the other thing I want to talk about is there was a victim who got, who was assaulted and her cellphone was stolen on public sidewalk. She waited five and a half hours for the sheriff department, and they never showed up. She finally gave up, and I put the victim's name on my caller, and I'd like the city to call her and report that crime.
Jason, do you have a date and a time?
It happened Friday.
This Friday?
Yes.
Is the captain still here? Could we look into that? All right, would you get back to me? Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Also, I'd like the mayor to propose a youth job program, because there are so many eyes whores I feel in the city of Lancaster, and join up with the Antelope Valley Conservation District and to plant trees and shrubs and ivy along walls to prevent graffiti drawing. And I think it's really needed. I think there's grants out there, and I think it would be a worthwhile program. We have a lot of people up here on Section 8, and we have a lot of at-risk youth that just need some guidance. Everybody's really good, but sometimes, I remember, I grew up in Little Rock, and we grew pears and peaches, and so I was out there working in the fields and working in packing houses. And I loved getting that paycheck when I was a kid and going to Charlie Brown Farms and getting a custom shake and nachos. It just made life so much better, and I felt really good about myself. And I think, so I got some paperwork on there. Also, I think we need to look at Riverside County and city and utility district. What they're doing out there is amazing. We could go to their website and see what they're doing, and I think we'd benefit from looking at that. They have a, they're the first county to receive this pipe that has a turbine in it that turns as the water goes through it. So I was thinking about AVAC, how they have the recharge basins, how that would be an awesome idea to be the second place in the nation to receive this from this company. And that's also on their website. Also, I have, oh, just Moreno Valley, without an enterprise district, they got a $1.8 million square foot distribution center, and they did it without an enterprise zone. So something's happening in Riverside that we need to look at. And the last comment I'd like to make is with the oil spill in the Gulf, I know, the oil spill in the Gulf of Mexico, is that where it's at? Yeah. This is a perfect opportunity, mayor, to take advantage of this and say, this is why Antelope Valley should be highlighted, because we are the future of alternative energy, and this is not the way to go, is oil. And highlight Antelope Valley, take advantage of it with CNN and whatever it is.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. You know, why don't we run turbines through the aqueduct? If anybody knows, give me a call, would you? Just seems like a no-brainer.
I have a brother who works at AVAC. I actually made a note to ask him.
I mean, doesn't that just seem like it makes a lot of sense?
It seems like one of those ideas that, yeah, it does.
Okay, let me know, would you? All right. Mr. Abur.
Good evening, council, staff, and citizens. I still have hope that the city, I still have hope for the city. When I was here at the last meeting two weeks ago, I went to the Criminal Justice Commission the next day, and I raised the issue on the incident out there at the Kaufman and Broad groundbreaking out there on the 26th of March. And I had a chance to talk to the captain. Well, since that point in time, on last Tuesday night, at about 8:30, I called one of the council members, and I indicated to him that I had information that there was going to be an attempt to harass me. Conversation lasted a couple of minutes. 10 minutes later, my friend picked me up to take me to a softball game. A unit came down my street, pulled into my neighbor's driveway, turned around, pulled us over, harassed us. They pulled us over by the time we got to the McDonald's. That all took place in about a 30-minute period. When I got home, I spoke with that same council member and indicated that 10 minutes after I'd spoke with that person, that in fact, what I had information was going to happen, did in fact happen. The officer that pulled me over was the exact same officer, Gonzalez.
Good evening, council, staff, and citizens. I still have hope that the city, I still have hope for the city. When I was here at the last meeting two weeks ago, I went to the Criminal Justice Commission the next day. And I raised the issue on the incident out there at the Kaufman and Broad groundbreaking out there on the 26th of March. And I had a chance to talk to the captain. Well, since that point in time, on last Tuesday night, at about 8:30, I called one of the council members, and I indicated to him that I had information that there was going to be an attempt to harass me. And the conversation lasted a couple of minutes. 10 minutes later, my friend picked me up to take me to a softball game. A unit came down my street, pulled into my neighbor's driveway, turned around, pulled us over, harassed us. They pulled us over by the time we got to the McDonald's. That all took place in about a 30-minute period. When I got home, I spoke with that same council member and indicated that 10 minutes after I'd spoke with that person, that in fact, what I had information was going to happen did in fact happen. The officer that pulled me over was the exact same officer Gonzalez that the incident went down out there at the groundbreaking. Same officer that removed me from that groundbreaking. This type of defamation, harassment, and discrimination is unacceptable. I filed a complaint with the station. I spoke with Lieutenant Sharp. She's an excellent employee. She was the watch commander that night, and she was very concerned. I have, the original complaint on the groundbreaking was 220153 on the 13th, and the second one is 220172 on the 18th. In light of this, I'm hoping that we can get some resolution and get some answers to this harassment, discrimination, and defamation of character, not to mention, my friend in the car with me is very scared for his life. He felt threatened, his family, his children. He's a businessman, a business owner. And this type of behavior is unacceptable. My friends don't want to associate with me for fear of reprisals and so forth and so on. We could go back to the 20th of January, when Paul Jones, the park enforcement officer, accused me of stealing. I provided Mr. Bozigan, as well as Ms. Boswell, names of witnesses and telephone numbers. Thank you very much for your time.
Emile Holmes.
How's everybody doing today? My name is Emile Holmes. How's everybody doing?
Hi, how are you?
I'm, I don't know where to start, I've got so much. But I started two corporations, one nonprofit and one for-profit, to address a lot of things that everybody been talking about. And I never really talked about things, you know, I've been trying to do things about it, and I've been trying to work with the youth. All this, I've been doing it with money out of my own pocket. I'm retired from the Army, and I worked as a civilian also. But I'm like, dried out, no monies. I've been trying to get a small business loan. That didn't work because of a small problem, you know, when the housing started going up, I couldn't swim fast enough. So, but I tried to keep the youth busy. I bought a few houses myself to employ the youth and the older guys who can't get jobs. I got another program, I mean, ideas come to my head, I put them down on paper. I got a program I call Reentry to Life. Guys with two strikes, they can come work with me, and within 10 years, they should be able to maybe vote again, have something to look forward to, something that everybody in the community would love it if I could. I'll be back to some more of these meetings. People ask, why do the kids play in the street? Well, in my area, right there on 45439 King Tree Avenue, there's no parks, no parks. And when they do get the new park built, they have to cross a four-traffic lane to get to it. There's a church over here at Gopion Beach. I've been trying to buy it for over a year and a half to make a community center, so that the kids can be right there. And everything, you know, guys, a lot of guys I work with, work for, contractors, I'm trying to get them to sign with me, with my cooperation, so we can get some city contracts, so we can do all of this. But they're afraid, or maybe Emile don't know enough. There's a lot that I need to learn, but I do have a lot of vision. Man, I can just go on and on and on. It don't stop. I'm like an inventor, you know, ideas just come to me. And right now, they're coming to me, I have to do something with them. And I wonder, I have my own personal problem with my father, three daughters, myself, 12, 14, and 17-year-olds. And I do need help myself. I'm trying to set up something for a man. I mean, oh, three, I've got more time. I'm trying to set up something for a man, that are single men. There's nothing set up for a single man with children, nothing, not one program, nowhere, nowhere in the world that I know of. I couldn't find one here in Lancaster. Actually, what I did was, there was one point, I had a property I was living in with my family, and it's gone, but I'm trying to get it back.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes.
I wish somebody would give me a call. My phone number is 661-942-2671, and my cell number is 661-400-4262. And y'all, everybody probably seen it around.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, staff, and audience. I come here before you tonight to ask for, basically to make a request, a humble request on behalf of the members of the Sherwood Mobile Home Park where I reside. I'm president of the association, and in response to numerous requests from our members, some quite vociferous, with respect to what's been happening to the enforcement of your seniors-only ordinance that was passed almost two years ago today. The ordinance specifically calls for a person being 20, 55 years of age in each space, we have 180 spaces, and signage, appropriate signage out front, telling people that that's a seniors' park as defined in your ordinance. That's basically my formal request here to make of you, to ask what's been happening with your ordinance. Is it going to be enforced? Is there any litigation moving? Or is some of this confidential still? I'd be happy to answer any of your questions.
What does code- What does code enforcement tell you when you're talking to them?
I'm not speaking to code enforcement as such. In the past, long past, weeks, months. The last time I spoke to one of their attorneys was several months ago, sir.
I've spoken to Mr. Shavara within the last two weeks, and Dave McEwen could give an update if you would like as well on what's happening.
I also spoke with Mr. Shavara and relayed to him a conversation that I had with Ms. Brubaker, that it was a more complicated situation than they had thought it would be, and that she would come back with a report as soon as possible and get back to you with that. So, but I just spoke to you last week, I believe it was, Mr. Shavara.
Well, as you all know, we've asked for meetings with you with respect to this issue, because we have quite a few people that want to know what's been happening to the ordinance or their style of living. They went to live there many years ago, much earlier than I did, with understanding that we have the clubhouse, we have six sexual offenders currently residing in the park. That was part of the reason for having an ordinance.
Well, if we don't have any children-
Families are coming in.
Wait a minute, wait a minute. If we don't have any children there, isn't that the preferred place for child molesters?
In violation of your ordinance, sir, underage people have been moving in with families, sir.
Well, I understand that, and I understand that that's a different issue. But is somebody looking at this?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, we've had our code enforcement attorneys prepare a report. They submitted the report, and I will probably be finished my review of it within the next week, and then we'll have an answer after that.
I mean, quite frankly, that seems like a possible solution in regards to child molesters. I'm not being facetious. I mean, if it's all adults and there's no children, you know, maybe we're on to something here. Maybe. What do you think?
Children are moving in and-
Well, I'm saying, let's say we keep the children out. Are we on to something or not?
Well, that probably would take a lawsuit. I don't know, sir. That's what we wanted to find out.
Well, you know, it certainly becomes a bigger issue for the city to keep children out if that, I don't know, I mean, if the homeowners aren't complaining.
They are complaining. That's one reason I'm here, sir.
Well, what I'm asking you is, I'm asking you is if, are they, would they rather have the children gone?
Yes.
Okay. So if we got rid of the children, and I'm not talking about rapists, I'm talking about child molesters, that would be a suitable alternative.
The ordinance calls for one person 55 and older in each space. That's being violated.
Okay. Ray, I will look into this.
Thank you, sir.
I think we're on to something here. Okay? Thank you. Barbara Mazzels, you're late, but you're also disabled, so I'm making a disabled exception.
Hi, Julia.
Hi, Julia.
Hi. Okay, before we start, can we go back just a second? I agree with you, beheading is wrong. Henry VIII, just because he didn't want to pay for spousal support, has no reason to behead a wife. And two, the guilty thing in the French Revolution, just because somebody's better dressed, doesn't mean you guilty to him. Okay, let's go.
I wonder what Prince Andrew thinks about all of this.
I thought, okay, I'm going to talk to you, honey. And here's what I'm going to talk about. On Section 8, the Board of Supervisors have come up with something new for the elderly on Medicare and Medi-Cal. Now they want to know what my prescriptions are, and if I don't sign a waiver, they will take away my Section 8. The fact that in 1974, the Act for the Elderly, or 1974 for the Disability Act, no longer exists if you're indigent, that's one. Two, I looked up Title 8. Your money, and I'm talking to you, honey, and my money, what little I have, is going for the benefit of aliens. I know Antelope Valley press wants to call them illegal, but honest, Constitution calls them aliens, and they're not entitled to an education beyond high school unless they have documentation showing that the alien has a right to be here. Title 8? Check it. Don't take my word for it. Now, that's that. I want to know why the Board of Supervisors is handing out your money and not giving it to me, per se, handing out your money for welfare for aliens, their children, who are not American citizens according to the Constitution, but nationals of the parent's country. So why, why are they conspiring? Who in Washington ordered, let the council members come before you, the citizens? Am I talking to you, honey? Do you get it? Because here's what it is when I say, am I talking to you, honey? Two people make love, and they get in bed. And we are in bed, per se, because we are citizens. So here's what's happening. In bed, and I'm talking to you, honey, I think we're being screwed. Thank you. Any questions?
Not a one, Barbara.
Okay.
All right, now, moving on. Oh, okay. Oh, I got it. Okay. Councilmember Marcus, you have a council report?
The report on the activities of the Antelope Valley Air Quality Management District. The board unanimously elected Sherry Marcus as vice chair, Mike Dispenza of Palmdale, the newly elected chair, and Mr. Marvin Crist was sworn in and representing the city of Lancaster. Welcome. The, we already mentioned that the $60,000 the board voted to divide between Lancaster and Palmdale for the $30,000 on the motor vehicle registration funds, they were applied for and awarded the very first day. So that was exciting. And we have conducted a public hearing to consider, we are going to, amendments to Rule 301, permit fees, which is fugitive dust. That's very interesting contact. Mr. Talbot, did you have something you wanted to say?
Here's the speaker's-
Oh, okay, on this? Okay, go ahead.
Coming up.
I put in a speaker card.
I got it.
I was hoping Ms. Marquez's report on AQMD would report that they have approved the Palmdale power plant plan and sent their comments back to the California Energy Commission, and the members of the board didn't even get to vote or discuss it in public. I asked to have it put on the agenda.
Hold on a second. You got a comment?
Well, I was going to say, you kind of stopped me midway there when you were standing in the aisle. I, you know, just kind of forgot what I was going to say.
Mr. Talbot, why don't you have a seat and let Councilwoman Marcus finish your report, and then maybe I'll answer your question.
Well, we did start to discuss the power plant, and we decided that we were at least going to have a presentation done by the organization that is going to be putting that power plant in. Basically, what I've understood, it is kind of basically, it's a done deal, and that as long as they meet all the requirements and everything.
It's not under the jurisdiction of our local. At 50 kilowatts and above is a different jurisdiction than ours, and that's why it's the California Energy Commission. So that's why we don't have approval. That's why we didn't vote. It's not that we weren't concerned. I'm very concerned about it. You were there, and you saw what took place.
You know, as the mayor, I'm extremely concerned about that. And the reason is, is I don't think the citizens of this community have any idea of what's coming. And when you look out your window and you look to the southeast of those mountains, you're not going to see them anymore. You're going to see something totally different. And I believe that's the case. And what I think that the city of Lancaster has to do is get some type of virtual demonstration so that all of us know what's coming, so that after it's built, we're not wringing our hands saying, how could they do this to us? We should at least know exactly what is coming into our backyard before it happens. Because quite frankly, I flew in one morning to Victorville to go to court, and I landed in Victorville Airport, and what I saw is a smaller power plant than they anticipate putting right in the center of our community. And I was shocked. And then, when I walked out of the courthouse, I could see the plume from it, from, you know, it took 15 minutes to get to the courthouse. I don't know how far away I was. But we're talking about a substantial change in what we see every single day when we walk outside our front door, and I don't know that we want that. But maybe we do. Maybe the benefits outweigh the change in what is coming. But I think all of us owe it to ourselves and to our families to at least know exactly what's coming before it's built, not after it's built. And I would like staff to start working on that, so that nobody's wringing their hands talking about what a victim they were after the fact.
I did talk to a couple of our board members on that, and we're going to work on getting some kind of visual representation, working with the air district on that.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Talbot, yes?
But I think we need to make it clear that the local AQMD has done everything under their power to make it as clean as possible.
Yes.
Okay, would you agree with that?
Yes, I do.
Okay, it's what we're talking about here is visual pollution. Would you agree with that?
Well, I'm here to raise public awareness. That's kind of ever done so.
Well, I don't think that's absolutely accurate. They do have to buy cancer credits in order to let that thing-
Clean air credits. Yeah.
Cancer credits. I mean, they're pollution credits. What do you think it is?
Well-
What is the result of air pollution?
Cancer credits.
Maybe they should. We would know more about what we're dealing with here. They're cancer credits, aren't they?
Well, no matter how many credits you buy, people who suffer from asthma and other lung problems don't get anything, no relief at all. It just makes it legal to buy credits from another air district who has free ones to sell. And they're not free, they're quite expensive.
The fact of the matter is, my understanding is, in order for them to build that power plant and spew this stuff into our environment, they have to buy pollution credits from some other district in order to dump that much pollution into this community. And no one has given me a cost-benefit analysis that justifies it, other than they want to do it. I just don't see, but maybe it's there. But nobody's bothered to come present it to us in the last two years, I think even four years, have they?
Well-
I mean, what it is, the city to the south is getting ready to do this, and they haven't explained anything to us, have they?
There have been workshops by the CEC. I have not personally had a meeting.
I attended the one they held in Palmdale. They wanted to talk about flora and fauna. I said, what about the air quality? And they said, well, we had that discussion last week in Sacramento. Oh, that's our air quality they're talking about, and they discussed it in Sacramento? I don't think I like that problem. But on my own hook, and I want to know who speaks for Lancaster.
But on my own hook, and I want to know who speaks for Lancaster, for the citizens of Eastside, because Palmdale built it on the north border. It's all going to blow on the southwest winds into northeast Lancaster.
There's no question that is going to get dumped in Lancaster. Is there any doubt about that?
I think that we're looking at it, it's the visual pollution. Where, when you're talking about the pollution, from what I understand, I had a presentation given to me, okay, and it's less than 1%, less than one part per million is what that plant is going to produce. It's the visual pollution that I would personally have a problem with. But living within a quarter mile of the freeway is around 600 parts per million. So it's, it's not that big of a difference.
I, I don't do well with the numbers when they try to bring up numbers to me. I'm talking about practicality. There is going to be particulate matter scattered all over northeast Lancaster. It'll be the largest pollution event in the Antelope Valley.
That's not true. That's, it will.
I won't argue with you, sir.
It will.
I know better.
Let me clarify it. It will be the largest stationary pollution in the valley. There's a lot of pollution that goes on in the valley. Plant 42 produces 440 tons. Well, this plant will produce 55 tons. So there's a big difference.
Oh, there's numbers for you. How can you verify that?
Well, the point is, the point is, the point is, we really need to, we need to get some people that, I think it's incumbent upon them to come and tell us what they're going to do to Lancaster's air quality. Because it isn't going to be Palmdale's air quality because just of the geographic location of it. Had they put it on the south side of Palmdale, then they would have been dealing with the pollution. Instead, it's on the north side and so all of the pollution, 350 days out of the year, is coming to Lancaster. It just seems to me that, that before you do that to a neighbor, you at least come and talk to them about it. And that has never happened.
Well, I'll tell you what, on my own hook, I wrote to the commanding general of Air Material Command in Wright Patterson Air Force Base, Ohio, and they control Plant 42 because that colonel down there wouldn't discuss the problem with me. And I see problems for Plant 42 if they build these two 145-foot stacks, cooling stacks, on the north side of the runway. And we've got aircraft coming and going. You're going to have a solar field there that'll have a reflection off it in the morning. Motors coming from the west headed toward the plant will have to be shielded by a berm around that solar field. Those stacks on a cold winter morning will drop a plume down on the highway and perhaps down on the runways. It'll be a problem. So on my own hook, I wrote to the commanding general there and told him problems I see and problems for Plant 42, potential of them. I got this letter back a week later. Monday afternoon. Dear Mr. Talbot, on behalf of the commander of the Air Force Material Command, General Donald Huffman, I want to thank you for sharing your concerns about the Palmdale Hybrid Power Plant and its potential effects on the Plant 42 mission. We're aware of the power project and are aware of it and are reviewing Energy Commission's environmental documentation to determine whether the construction would have any impact on Plant 42. And so noted that I have already noticed, I've talked to the air quality people, I've talked to the regional planning of Los Angeles County and the Energy Commission, I spoke before them all. And his last sentence is, we thank you for your interest and concern regarding Plant 42 and its important mission to maintain America's national defense. And I said, don't bite the hand that feeds you. If you make it inoperable for them to operate out of that plant, that's our biggest, second largest employer, I believe, after Edward Air Force Base. And if you ask the manager of our local air quality district, you'll find out that that pollution from that plant will be greater than the Palmdale Plant 42. It'll be double that and then some.
Thank you, Mr. Talbot.
Thank you.
And I appreciate you bringing this to our attention. I mean, this really is a serious problem that you were the first one to raise the alarm on. Thank you. Lancaster Financing Authority, there's no action required at this time. There is no close session. Counsel, do you have anything you want to bring up? Okay, folks.
I did, I did want to mention one thing. There's quite a bit of controversy about the state of Arizona enforcing the laws, basically that the federal government won't. And I know that there are a lot of city councils that have taken a position on that and I'm not asking for that. I think it was a little bit ridiculous for the city of Los Angeles to boycott Arizona when Arizona can flip a switch on them and cut their lights out. But anyway, and I do believe that.
I wish we were Arizona.
I do believe that our borders need to be secured. We are either a sovereign nation or we are not. And right now, we are not. And I think it is a huge problem. And I just want to say that I support Arizona and I support Governor Jan Brewer in what they are doing and big supporter of state rights.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, we are adjourned until the next regular meeting on Tuesday, June 8th, 2010, at 5:00 PM. And I would tell Carol to get my dinner ready, but she's not hungry.